Here.
Eight present, one absent.
And true to the agenda and the regular process, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? If there is none, we'll go on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I want to pull the Planning Commission minutes of January 30th, 2008, and I want to pull the mayoral appointments to various boards and committees because I'm sure he will be here and want to do something. So I want to pull those two.
Anything else?
Wanted to, we're at the consent items, like to pull the municipal utilities minutes of January 28th.
Anything else? If not, we'll approve the council minutes, the community ed, and the permit application from West Central Ducks Unlimited. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'll take them in the order that they are, even though they were pulled in different orders, but councilmember DeBleek, the MUC minutes.
Just wanted to point out at the council with the municipal utilities, they approved a three-year labor contract agreement for '07, '08, and '09 between the utilities and the IBEW. It fits into the guidelines of the, that were set by the city labor committee, so, and I know this item has not, was not through our labor committee for approval, so approving it here would approve the contract unless the labor committee wouldn't like to deal with that, and we could refer it to your committee.
Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Chair in that committee, I would have no objection, this certainly falls within what we had previously discussed at our labor committee with the total package increase at that 4 percent level when you figure in the changes to the current health insurance plan, and that also includes the 3 percent wage increase, which falls in line with the other bargaining units over this last contract cycle.
Okay. Anybody else? Bruce?
I guess, Mr. Mayor Protam, if there are no other questions or concerns in minutes, I'll motion to approve those minutes of January 28th.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mayor, we have the Planning Commission minutes pulled and the appointments pulled. We've already approved the consent agenda, but those two items, and councilmember Dawkins pulled the Planning Commission minutes and the mayoral appointments.
All right. Thank you. I apologize for being a couple of minutes late, I just drove back from the airport in Minneapolis. We will now go to the Planning Commission minutes. Who pulled those?
Councilmember Dawkins.
Councilmember Dawkins, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item number three is the wastewater conveyance system land acquisition. Within the minutes, it says there are 36 parcels being dealt with. When I counted the attachment aid, the design, and I'm wondering how that can be a design, it's just a listing of parcels, and I count 37 parcels and not 36.
Mick, do you want to respond to that?
You're looking at the owner list?
Well, it says attachment A. That's what it's making reference to, said there are a total of 36 parcels being dealt with and 26 landowners, and so it says parcel number and owner list, and when I count them, there are 37 and not 36. So do we need to change that in the?
In the minutes. I believe earlier when we started, parcel 36 was combined, and then there was a reason to be an A and a B.
Okay, okay.
So 37 might be the most current.
Okay, so I would move that we change that to 37, to read 37 then?
You can do that, it's not going to be.
Don't need a motion?
Correct.
Okay. And then I want to point out that myself and councilmember Christiansen were at that meeting, and I want to talk about what I said, I'm not sure that councilmember Christiansen wants to enter, but anyway, it indicates that Jim Dawkins suggested to the commission using existing empty lots in the city core for the type of housing being proposed by Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. He also stated demolishing several of the worst homes in town and rebuilding on them would be better use of existing services and utilities. Here again, we have lots in town, we have decrepit housing, all of the infrastructure is in, most of those neighborhoods have new streets with new infrastructure, so my suggestion to the Planning Commission was that, and it goes on to say that the commission agreed with his statements, but that the question of how this type of project would be paid for and accomplished remains. However, I recall that when they were here, they, Southwest, they did that kind of construction, they showed in cities where they have done that, so I would certainly like to see us, the next time someone comes to town, look at developing in the core city. And at our COPs meeting on this past Monday at Calvary, we talked about the fact that on Ann Street and Becker, there's a new Habitat for Humanity house that is just coming up. One of the attenders at the COPs meeting said that the two houses south of that had recently been purchased, and they're not rental units now anymore, and so I guess that goes to reinforce what I'm saying, is when you put a nice new house in a neighborhood, it brings an ambiance to that neighborhood, that people are caring for that neighborhood, okay? They went on to say the commission agreed with the statement, but the question of how this type of project would be paid for and accomplished remains, because the applicant already owned the land and came to the commission with a proposal that met the city requirements, there was no, there was not much they could do. So anyhow, I would certainly like to see us do that in the future.
I'd like to ask our city administrator or our city attorney, if the city were to consider that kind of a policy, to go out and identify housing that was somewhat below standards, what are the impediments to doing that? I mean, first of all, there has to be a willingness on the part of the owner to sell the property, and that may or may not be easily accomplished. I mean, they might be willing to sell it, but they might just as easily say, we don't want to sell that property.
That's fine.
But what are some other impediments, you know, to setting up that kind of a policy?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the biggest obstacle, of course, is financing, and we've actually done that in Wilmer in the past. I recall when I was with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, we applied for a community development block grant program whereby we acquired scattered sites throughout the community and constructed single-family housing on those sites.
Were those sites, Mick, that already had housing that were demolished?
Yes.
Was that a problem to do that, to get owners to sell that property?
No, I believe that, if I recall correctly, we were able to acquire 11 properties, but it was all on a voluntary basis.
But it took finding grant money to do that?
It was through a block grant program.
Do those grants exist anymore, do you know, or does HRA ever talk about that stuff?
Those grants exist to, you know, I'm not sure today what deeds priorities are, but I suspect that housing rehabilitation and renovation projects that target families of low and moderate income are still a high priority.
Rich, anything you think of that would be an impairment or impediment for the city to go down that avenue?
Unless the city or the HRA were going to be the acquiring authority, I think it would be difficult to enforce something like that, because you're saying that the only lots that can be used are those in the core city that are in need of redevelopment, and neither the city nor the HRA is involved in the acquisition. You don't have the power of eminent domain there to acquire the property, and the property owner can obviously set an inflationary high price, saying, well, there is no other property you can acquire other than mine and my neighbors and so forth, so it really wouldn't be a willing buyer, willing seller market, and I think that would present a real problem.
Thank you. All right. You know, we just had the mayor's housing task force met for about six months, and that idea was not brought up at all. Maybe it could have been brought up, or maybe it could be explored further. Anything else, Jim, you want to file these minutes?
I just want to make one more comment. My preference, Mr. Mayor, would be first to look at open lots, to see if we can't find a willing buyer and a willing seller, okay? That would be my first objective. The other would be after we can accomplish putting houses on vacant lots that we already have in the city.
All right.
Unless councilmember Christiansen wishes to say anything, I'll move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes of the Planning Commission of January 30th. Any other comments about this? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. The mayoral appointments, I have three citizens I'd like to recommend to the council for their consideration. I'd like to bring those up at this point, and then I'll go to you, Jim, if you have some more comments. The first one is a woman named Nancy Byberg. Nancy is being recommended to be appointed to the Community Education and Recreation Board. Nancy lives on 2408 Country Club Drive. She was born and raised in Wilmer. Her father was Dr. Nyberg, a well-known chiropractor in this area, and she grew up in this community. She was gone for about 13 years for her own education in college and married, and then came back. She works as a substitute teacher between the levels of preschool through sixth grade. She has subbed, she said, somewhat in the Wilmer school system, but also, and I guess primarily with the Community Christian School. She has three teenage sons, ages 13, 14, and 17, and they are still at home. She's a member of the Assembly of God Church, and she and her husband live, she forgot, got to tell me what her husband does, but.
Lee Byberg is Life Science Innovations.
Okay. Is that Communications, or what is that? Life Science?
No, Life Science Innovations, that's part of Midwest Technology.
Midwest Technology. That's right. She said they were living in Scandinavia, and one of the owners of Midwest went over there and recruited her husband to come back here, and that's how they got back to Wilmer. So that's the first recommendation. The second one is David Anfenson. David is a certified public accountant, and I'm recommending that he be appointed to the Rice Hospital Board of Directors. He's the chairman of, he's been chairman and treasurer and board member of several nonprofit organizations. The latest one is, he's the chairman of the Shelter House here in Wilmer. He's also involved with the Southwest Minnesota Synod, has served on their executive committee in long-term planning, stewardship, foundation work, endowment fund. He and, he has his own accounting firm with his partner, Mark Thompson. They've been accountants here in Wilmer since 1989. He has four offices in Wilmer, Spicer, Glenwood, and Starbuck, and he, let's see, his wife's name is Susan, they have two children, a son in junior high and a daughter, and I didn't ask the ages of the children, but I would like to recommend that he be appointed to the Rice Hospital Board. They're in need of a financial person on that Board of Directors, and I think he would be a good fit. The third person is Charlie Oaks. Charlie and his family, wife and family, live at 1022 Third Street Southwest. Charlie moved to Wilmer in August of 2004 from Wadena. He had been on the school board in Wadena for 10 years, he'd been on the HRA board in Wadena for six years. He's married and has three adult children. He's currently the executive director of West Central Industries, has two sites for his industries, both in Wilmer and Hutchinson. He's a member of Calvary Lutheran Church. I'd like to see him appointed to the Planning Commission. So those are three citizens that are willing to get involved and be involved, and with the council approval, if you want to think about it, you can, or if you want to appoint them tonight, I would appreciate if you would consider that. Would the council like to do anything with those recommendations?
I would move to approve the appointments, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve these three citizens, Charlie Oaks to the Planning Commission, David Anfenson to the Rice Hospital Board of Directors, and Nancy Byberg to the Community Education and Recreation Board. Any discussion about that? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Ron, did you want to say something about one of those?
You know how I feel, I would appreciate getting these names probably a week ahead of time. I've given you a list of probably 60 to 80 in the 14 years I've been on the council, and one has been approved. One. That's my comment.
Well, I would also offer the comment that I've asked some of those people, and they refuse to serve, or they are not interested in serving, and I also would appreciate if you would recommend some women and some minority people. Your list never includes any minority people, never includes women.
Are we going to argue about my list?
Well, I'm just commenting.
I mean, you want people, you want people suggested for a board or a commission, and I brought them forth, I sent you 12 two weeks ago. That's my comment.
I'd like to see a more diversified list.
Thank you.
Anything else? Jim, did you want to say something about this?
No.
All right. Then we'll move to, we've approved everything then, Doug, on the consent agenda then?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move to the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the city council?
Good evening. My name is Terry Reamer. I am the president of the Wilmer Police Civil Service Commission. I was here a month ago asking for someone to be assigned to our commission. I know that at least two of the members have submitted names for consideration. Two of the members of this council have submitted names. Last time I was here, I heard members of this council saying how good it was to have people who were willing to serve and how, and to get the regular citizens involved in our city government. It's very disheartening not to have someone assigned to the police commission. I don't know what to say, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what to say. We have state law reads as this. There shall be appointed each year thereafter by the city council one member of the commission whose term of office shall be for three years. Not should be, not can be, shall be. The next question I have then is the commissioner that declined to be reappointed to the second term, is he still on, since it reads under membership? And all commissioners shall hold their office until their successors are appointed and What's going to happen next summer also, when my time is up? Do I just stay here until I am replaced? And that's the law. We're playing, somebody is playing around with the law here, and these are the rules that we are under, that we have chosen as a city to be under. And someone is ignoring those laws. I'm very disheartened that I have to come here twice to ask and beg for another member of the commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Has this been considered yet by the Labor Commission? Weren't we putting this on the agenda for the Labor Committee to talk about? I thought that's what we had talked about at the last council meeting on that. Steve?
I don't recall off the top of my head, but we can certainly take that up at Labor. We have a meeting scheduled for the 27th, and certainly we could take that up then.
There's been discussion about whether or not the Police Civil Service Commission should continue as a citizen board, and so I'd like that discussion to take place at the Labor Committee and come up with a recommendation on whether or not we should continue it or not continue it. That's where I thought it had been left, and I'd like to ask our city attorney, is the state law that Mr. Reamer just quoted, is that, is that an act of current law?
Sure.
So does the city council, should the city council appoint, or is there the possibility the city council could let that civil service commission expire?
It doesn't expire for the reason he stated, the people that are serving continue to serve until their replacements are appointed by the city.
Well, does the city council have the discretion not to continue the civil service commission? Takes eight votes. But what about that law then, that he just quoted?
Well, there are two separate statutes. What he read you is a statute dealing with the annual appointment of members to the commission, assuming the commission is going to continue. There's a separate section dealing with the authority of the city to disband the police commission.
I see. And that has been the discussion from, I believe, our city, some of our city staff, that whether or not the civil service commission should continue.
Right.
Well, it went to the Labor Relations Committee, Mr. Mayor.
Was there a recommendation?
No.
No. It was just heard for discussion?
Yes.
How long ago was that?
Oh, that's, that's a few months ago.
Two or three months ago.
Was it voted on, or was it just not a vote, or was it a tied discussion, or what?
Boy, I'd have to look back at the minutes myself, I don't.
I believe at that time, Mr. Mayor, it was simply a discussion for information only, and that we took no action at that time.
I think, I think part of that discussion was in regard to the charter commission, too, was it not? That we had led to that.
Yeah, and I think that's correct. I think that's one of several items that's come before us over the past year, that bring up the question of whether or not to convene the charter commission. Certainly, we've had that, we've got the Rice and Utility Boards requesting additional or alternate terms of service for their members, and I think that's one of the things that we'll be discussing at our work session as well. So it'll come before that work session next week, and it'll likely, also, we can certainly put it before the Labor Committee on the 27th.
Okay, the work session for the charter commission is scheduled for what date? Wasn't that the 24th of February?
13th.
13th. February.
February 13th.
We wish it was March.
Okay, so that'll be, that'll be the discussion about whether or not to convene the charter commission, and if that's going to happen, then the future of the Police Civil Service Commission will be part of that discussion. Is that the understanding of the council? All right. And that also will be, so that's where it's at, Terrell, is that what you quoted is right, what Mr. Rodding said, I assume is right, too, that there's two statutes involved, and that the city council will consider this through the charter commission process, as to whether or not they want the civil service commission to continue.
May I readdress?
Sure, go ahead.
The comment has been made that we turn the Civil Service Police Commission into a advisory board or panel.
Uh huh.
That has nothing to do with whether we appoint somebody now or not, whether the commission goes on or not. Are you, are we going to not allow the present commissioners to be on the advisory board then? Why wouldn't we just, if we're going to get rid of the commission, appoint the person, the commissioner now, and if you're going to say, okay, we're going to get rid of the commission and go to an advisory board, then appoint those people to that advisory board, or are we just done? And we get new people to go into the advisory board?
I don't think we've addressed that question yet.
There's been a lot of, I, this is, at the, around the anniversary of a year that this discussion has been going on, and all of us just want it to end. Let's come to some decision.
Uh huh. Well, you know, the first decision that the council has to make is whether or not they're going to convene the charter commission. If they decide to do that, then this will be one of the items that the charter commission will consider.
Do we fall underneath the charter commission? We're state law, we're not underneath.
Rich, can you help us here?
The police commission is not under the charter, but if there's going to be a new advisory board, that could well be created by the charter commission.
Okay. So we just don't have that answer yet. Okay, so the, councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe in the, we were handed a sheet by Mr. Rodding several years ago about how many votes it takes for certain items, and I believe the charter commission takes eight votes to disband it, if I'm not mistaken. I read that when talking to Terry a month or two ago.
Takes unanimous vote for to abolish the police?
Correct, yeah. Just like, I believe the charter commission's the same?
That's not, that's not in the charter.
No, it's not in the charter? Where did we read that?
There's a state statute for the commission.
Says a unanimous, which would be eight votes. That's the same for the charter commission, too, right? Takes eight to open it up, eight to approve anything that goes into it, any suggestions?
I think what you're thinking about, councilmember Christiansen, is if a recommendation for a change in the charter comes to the council by the charter commission, then it takes eight votes for that to be adopted by ordinance. I think that's what you're thinking about.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council?
Good evening.
Hold on.
Yep.
Councilmember Dawkins?
I just had one question, and I know we've approved, I think we've approved the consent agenda, have we not?
Yes.
But I just, I still want to ask this question. How come we didn't get minutes from our last work study on the funding of stormwater? Is there a reason why? Councilmember Gardner and myself both made presentations, the Tribune editorial recently said they were concrete ideas, and I'm wondering why that's not part for the public to see?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know why we would not have included them, and it was an oversight on my part, and I'll make sure it's in the next package.
All right. All right, Mr. Jorgensen?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, in a related comment to your police commission, why don't you just appoint two people, or the necessary people, so you're at least in compliance with state law? If you want to disband the commissioner, have that issue taken up later, so be it, but it doesn't make any sense why you would violate a state law when it's pretty clear. That's my only comment.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move on in the agenda to number eight, which is the Finance Committee Report of January 28th. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda had to do with the planning and development budget.
The first item on our agenda had to do with the planning and development budget. Staff presented a request to reappropriate $6,500 from the Planning and Development Department's 2007 Professional Services Budget to the 2008 Budget to cover the cost of services to be provided by Mid-Minnesota Development Commission for the Comprehensive Plan Project. It was anticipated that this was going to be done in 2007, but for a number of reasons, it's been delayed until 2008. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution authorizing funds be re-appropriated from the 2007 Planning and Development Department Professional Services Budget to 2008 in the amount of $6,500.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to introduce a resolution authorizing funds to be re-appropriated from the 2007 Planning and Development Department Professional Services Budget to the 2008 Budget in the amount of $6,500. Further comment?
Roll call?
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerley?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nays.
That resolution passes.
The next item on our agenda had to do with city fees. Staff reported that pursuant to an annual review of the City of Wilmer's schedule of rental rates and fees, several changes have been proposed to make, to more adequately compensate for the costs incurred by the city to provide those various services. We had a lengthy discussion on that, and after we discussed it, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution adopting the new schedule of rental rates and fees.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for a resolution adopting the new schedule of rental rates and fees. Further comment?
Councilmember Fagerley?
Nope.
Nope. Roll call?
Councilmember Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
No.
Fagerley?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That resolution passes.
The next item was a discussion, again, an ongoing discussion of the tort liability insurance requirements. Clerk Halliday explained to us that the current policy for permitting various events is to require that the sponsors provide proof of insurance for general liability coverage up to the maximum municipal tort liability limits. It used to be a million dollars, but in 2008, it has increased to $1.2 million per occurrence. In 2007, the J.C.'s provided a certificate of insurance listing a $2,500 deductible. After discussions with the City Attorney, the City also requested the J.C.'s to remit a check for that $2,500 deductible so that the zero to $1 million coverage was complete. In attendance were both Laura and Stefan Delinsky of the J.C.'s, and they requested that the City refund the $2,500 that they had paid to cover the deductible in 2007, and also to request a change in the City's policy by allowing insurance coverage with a small deductible. It's getting to the point that there may be some insurance that they can't even get if they don't have a deductible on it, was, was what their concern was. If the City would allow a deductible, the cost of the insurance premiums would be more affordable, and the J.C.'s could continue to sponsor the downtown block party. Then we discussed some possible changes that we had thought about to change the City policy, and one of them was to allow a deductible to reduce the premium cost. A second would be require payment from the sponsor in the amount of the deductible, which would be held for a shorter length of time than the current one-year period. And lastly, to identify some specific community events for which a deductible would be allowed. Staff was directed to draft some language to address the liability and deductible issue, and that will come back to the Committee at a later time. So that was for information only. The next item was wastewater treatment project items. Mr. Holmes of Donahue and Associates explained that the original wastewater treatment plant relocation program design phase budget in the amount of $6,850,000 was established by the City Council in May 2006. Out of that budget, $810,000 is being proposed to be transferred to a new category, Conveyance Corridor Acquisition Budget. Areas of the design phase budget would then be amended by the amount of that transfer. So it's no net change, just moving some dollars around. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution adopting the wastewater treatment plant conveyance corridor acquisition budget of $810,000, and amending the wastewater treatment plant relocation program design phases, phase budget of $6,850,000.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for a resolution adopting the new wastewater treatment plant conveyance corridor acquisition budget in the amount of $810,000, and then amending the wastewater treatment plant relocation program design phase budget in the amount of $6,850,000. Further comment about that?
Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerley?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
The final item on our agenda were some reports. We reviewed the 1231 Outstanding Indebtedness and the December Rice Trust. Unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Any comment? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next are the Public Works Safety Committee Report for January 29th. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item was a, was in regards to the 2008 Improvement Project, and we reviewed a revised project list. And under the reconstruction, streets in Valleybrook area were deleted to coincide with the Hidden Valley Estates Development, which was proposed for construction in 2009. Wilmer Avenue Southwest from 18th Street Southwest to Trunk Highway 40 is being deleted because the railroad crossing upgrades near Trunk Highway 40 are postponed until 2009. Three streets on the list that were going to be reconstructed in conjunction with the wastewater treatment plant conveyance line are also delayed until 2009 to coincide with that construction. Then, under overlay, Minnesota Avenue Southwest from 9th Street to 10th Street Southwest is now being proposed to be repaired as a ribbon patch, delaying overlay a few years. And then the underground section, delete Wilmer Avenue Southwest from 8th Street to 11th Street because the county has postponed their project from 1st Street to 18th Street until 2009. And the City is proposing constructing these storm improvements along with the county's project. Other areas of the underground section to include two new developments are also removed as the developers of Hidden Valley Estates and Fair Acres addition have withdrawn plans for this construction season. And this, of course, also affects our street lighting. Staff then proposed adding the construction of Pleasant View Drive Southeast from 12th Street to 15th Street to coincide with the development of a storm sewer improvement that is being designed to alleviate flooding issues in this area. Other items of revision include the annual crack ceiling improvements, more evaluation of the 10th and Candy Ohio Southwest storm water options, and then the deletion of the path on Wilmer Avenue Southwest, and to instead propose construction of a path along Lakeland Drive from the YMCA to Olina Avenue Southeast. After discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I will introduce a resolution to order the improvement report for the 2008 projects based on the revisions that we just went over, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to order the improvement report for the 2008 projects as described. Further comment?
Councilmember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if Mr. Odenz would, would tell us about the 12th Street Southeast to 15th Street development of the storm sewer improvement that's being designed to alleviate flooding issues in this area? I know there are folks watching that want to hear about that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, we've had issues in the Pleasant View area along the ditch next to the waste treatment plant. And one of the ideas that we looked at is, is simply connecting the storm sewer across the open field, if you will, from the old roller skating rink west to the Pleasant View Development, and redirecting some of the flow into Grass Lake via the 48-inch that goes there versus down through the Waterview Business Park. So that was the, the reason for suggesting that on the original report, and then considering actually doing the street in this report as the addition as well.
So the primary flooded issue, or where it floods the most, is in about the 1,500 block of Southeast 9th Street there?
1,400 block.
1,400 block?
Just south of 1,400.
1,400, yeah, right, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I note in this improvement report as well that one of the items is the further evaluation of the 10th Street and Candy Ohio Avenue Southwest stormwater options. And it's, I think, been brought to our attention that there, that there might be some confusion regarding the motion that was made a month ago directing staff to evaluate that area for stormwater project alternatives, using the recommendations of the City Attorney in his letter of last November to, to this Council. At the time that I made that motion, which passed at our first meeting in January, it was certainly my intent that we pursue this by looking at trying to do a preliminary study to determine what could be done at those, at that area, which of necessity would involve a potential acquisition of property or properties at that area. Now, we don't need to decide whether or not, in my opinion, we don't need to decide whether or not to negotiate a purchase at this time. We simply need to evaluate what might be able to be done at that intersection. I thought, in my mind, that it was clear what it was that we were asking staff to do. And I guess I would suggest that we need to begin to put, in the words of Mr. Running, a plan in place as to where the City is going if title is obtained to one or more properties. And that was certainly my intent in, in offering that motion, which, which did pass. And I guess if, if there's, if there's any confusion, I failed to see where that, where that should, should lie.
Any other comment? Well, the Council gave direction to the staff to develop a plan for drainage out of there, using the detention pond idea, correct? And the staff has been working on that, doing some engineering work and designing work on what that would accomplish and how it would be done, having conversations with the school board. And we're getting closer to that idea, I understand, because we still have to go back to the school board. Mick, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll respond to Mr. Gardner's comment because I am the one who indicated that I was, that he was confused. The City Attorney's letter starts out by stating, "If a majority of the Council are interested in pursuing the acquisition of properties." That's how the letter starts. Two days before that letter was written, the City Council, on November 19th, voted down a motion to acquire the property at, the Jorgensen property. Therein lies my confusion.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. And, and I understand that portion of it. I guess where it becomes clear, for me at least, is that further, further in Mr. Running's letter, he talks about the need for a preliminary study to determine whether any of the lots are suitable, and that there are five points of course of action to take. The fifth item is have the land appraised and proceed to negotiate a purchase. We don't need to be at that point in time to evaluate. We need to do that preliminary study. Now, you rightly said, Mr. Mayor, that we're looking at the stormwater detention ponds further upstream, Garfield, Trot Avenue. This was a motion that was made after that was already put into place. This is something additional that we voted on to direct staff to take action, to properly evaluate that intersection and the properties in that area for any potential projects that might be deemed worthy of pursuing steps one through five on that. But we need to get through step one first. And that's where, to me, it was clear that that's what my motion was intended. Now, if we need to have some type of a clarifying motion, I'll be certainly prepared to, to offer that. But if it is the sense of the Council that, that in fact is what they approved at our January 4th meeting, then personally, I would see no need to offer a second motion in that regard.
Any other comments from the Council? I don't see any comments coming forward. Doug, did you want to say something?
Well, I think we're all getting a little confused, and I, you know, my understanding of the whole thing was that, that intersection from your motion is just supposed to be evaluated. What are the options we can do there? That was, I don't know. Is that too vague?
But at the same time, the Council did, did give direction to the staff on pursuing one strategy, which they are pursuing.
One strategy being?
The detention ponds.
Oh, absolutely.
That's, I mean, that's one.
I mean, I think that's set in action, that we're going to do the detention ponds at Garfield and Trot.
Right.
And we also had authorized, but now it doesn't seem to work out because of the higher water table, but the detention pond at Kennedy.
Right.
So that, that's out of the mix. So right now, as far as I'm concerned, what are, is there some other options, is what I'm hearing asked, at 10th and Candy Ohio? And then Garfield and Trot? Now, whatever that option is, I have no idea.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, given the fact that we're not looking at doing the underground work between 8th and 11th on Wilmer Avenue this year, which was going to be one of the centerpieces of, of the stormwater efforts in that area, to me, it just behooves us to pursue finding out what potential types of, of, of projects we might be able to do in that area to give those folks some relief.
In addition to what we've already directed the staff to do, is that what you're saying? We've given them direction on the detention ponds. You're saying that they should be coming up with other ideas, too?
That was certainly the intent of the motion that we, as far as I'm concerned, that we, that I offered, and we passed in January.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we got to remember, yes, we had a vote where we specifically said we weren't interested in, in buying a, one particular piece of property. But I think in a larger scope, we're just looking for options. Are there some additional options out there? And I know a number of things have been talked about. And we're pretty well set that the detention ponds are one of them. And, and I think we're just looking, is there anything else? Is that, is that it? Or are there some other options? And I think that's really all we're looking for is, you know, what else can we do to reasonably solve this?
Or is there anything more?
Or is there anything more? Yeah. I mean, we just need a comfort that, that we've really investigated it thoroughly.
Or do we do the, do we do the detention ponds and see how they work? to help the situation? These detention ponds?
Well, we are, Mr. Mayor, and I'm obviously referring to a letter from the Jorgensons dated January 31st. Mr. Jorgensen asks the question. The purpose of this letter is to ask where you are at with your plan for our property. We'd like to know how you are proceeding with the city attorney's recommended plan. Well, the city attorney didn't recommend a plan. He said, "If the council, if a majority of the council is interested in pursuing acquisition, these are the steps you would take." All I'm asking here tonight, for my benefit, for everybody's benefit, does the work we're doing, or is the work we're doing, to include the possibility of land acquisition, given the fact that you voted not too long ago not to do that?
Mm-hmm.
And that would clear it up. And if you're headed in that direction, then that's what we need to know.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I recall at that same meeting that we voted it down, I made the motion to acquire the property. And it was voted down. The staff, Mick, had handed us, I think there was five or six recommendations, and one of them was acquisition of the property. I don't have it with me here, but I recall that. And I don't believe that we ever stated that that was out of the mix. I don't, I don't recall that, that it was out of the mix. I recall it being still in the mix. It's an option. It was an option to purchase that property and do something there. So I think we're being misled. It was an option, acquisition of that property. And per Rich's letter to us, he stated the five steps we need to go through if we're interested in. I still am. I think we need to do something there, but we need to define what we're going to do. Step number one, I don't have that letter with me, but what step number one is-
Determine the, what the project is going to be, pond, garden, or something else, and the scope of the project, how much land is needed.
So I think acquisition still is in the mix. And is the detention ponds going to help? Anything we do over there is going to help. I don't know how much it's going to help. I know we also need to address the water that's backing up. I would guess that just as much water comes to 10th and Candy Ohio from runoff, the same amount is backing up there and blowing the covers off the street. Somewhere, that's got to be addressed. And if it's on Wilmer Avenue or wherever it's coming from, I haven't heard any suggestions or what to do there, but that's got to be looked at. And if we need a motion to carry out Mr. Ronning's recommendations, five steps, I'll make the motion that we abide by what he stated in his letter and start with number one. Second?
I think you're already-
Don't we have a resolution on the-
We have a resolution on the table right now.
Don't we?
We do.
That would be out of order until the resolution's voted on.
The motion on the table is to approve the 2008 projects as they were presented.
Okay, I withdraw my, the list is done. Resolution, or my motion.
Was the second one a withdrawal then?
He does.
Any other comments on the resolution that's on the table? You ready? Councilmember, or DeBleek?
Mr. Mayor, I would just, you know, we have in here that they're evaluating the 10th and Candy Ohio Avenue Southwest for options under the storm pond sewer improvements. I think after, you know, we had directed staff to look at the Garfield and the Trot Avenue and also the Kennedy Schools area, I think after, after Kennedy Schools was taken off the list because it would not work, I think we're looking at other options to supplement that loss of that area and someplace else to add storm pond sewer capacity into the, back into the mix there as well for what we're losing. And I think the 10th and Candy Ohio area is the logical place to look because that's the lowest area in that floodplain, or that water, watershed area. So I think that's, that's why it's on the, it's on the improvement list. And if that requires acquiring property over there, that should be the recommendation is the, one of the options coming from the, from the city engineer when he brings back the improvement report.
This isn't, this isn't very clear yet.
I did not think at any time that there was any consideration to purchase property.
No, there wasn't.
I, because we had the discussion about one lot and one lot not having any significant impact to justify the expense to develop anything there because it would just be far too small. Yes, every little bit helps. We understand that. But I, there has to be some offsetting value to the city if we purchase that property. I did not think at any time that there was, since that motion, that there was consideration of purchasing that property.
Councilmember Anderson?
I would tend to agree with the sense of that, and I think the council spoke and said, "We're not going to buy one piece of property." It seems to me I had heard that it was going to take like half a block, six properties or something like that. But I still think that, in my mind, that's what I was looking for. If we were going to do that, we would have to buy this much property and the land is suitable for a detention pond. I mean, if the water table is so high there that you have the same problem you had at Kennedy, then it wouldn't make any sense to do that. So I think I was looking at, if we were to do this, what would the plan be? And the plan, to me, was not to buy one piece of property.
All right. Anything else? We have a resolution on the table to approve the 2008 projects as proposed. Roll call.
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Reese?
All right, Mr. Mayor, the next item is a final pay on the 19th Avenue and 5th Street signal semaphore construction by Granite Ledge. And everything is complete, so they're looking for final payment. And I would introduce a resolution to accept project number 0705 and issue final payment to Granite Ledge in the amount of $16,480.48.
Second? We have a motion and a second to accept project number 0705 and issue final payment to Granite Ledge Electrical Contractors in the amount of $16,480.48. Comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
The next item is also a final pay request, and that's on our 2004 airport grading, paving, and electrical, which had been awarded to Dunick Brothers. And the final estimate, which is a release of all retainage, the project consisted of paving the runway, taxi lanes, taxi ways, and electrical work to include the runway lighting. And, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to accept the 2004 airport paving, grading, and electrical project and issue final payment to Dunick Brothers in the amount of $69,828.13.
Second? Second? We have a motion and a second to accept the 2004 airport paving, grading, and electrical project, issue final payment to Dunick Brothers in the amount of $69,828.13. Any comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
We also received a final pay request for our 2005 airport miscellaneous projects, which is grading of the airport site, drain tile, fence, gates, lighting, runway paving, and striping. This project is completed, and there was one change order that decreased the contract by $86,000 for deletion of a sprinkler system. I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept the 2005 airport miscellaneous improvement project and issue final payment to Dunick Brothers in the amount of $21,654.69.
Second? We have a motion and a second to accept the 2005 airport miscellaneous improvements project and issue final payment to Dunick Brothers in the amount of $21,654.69. Any comment about that? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
The next item is also a final pay request, and that's on our 2004 airport grading, paving, and electrical, which had been awarded to Dunick Brothers. And the final estimate, which is a release of all retainage, the project consisted of paving the runway, taxi lanes, taxi ways, and electrical work to include the runway lighting. And, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to accept the 2004 airport paving, grading, and electrical project and issue final payment to Dunick Brothers in the amount of $69,828.13.
Any comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
The next item is also a final pay request, and that's on our 2004 airport grading, paving, and electrical, which had been awarded to Dunick Brothers. And the final estimate, which is a release of all retainage, the project consisted of paving the runway, taxi lanes, taxi ways, and electrical work to include the runway lighting. And, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to accept the 2004 airport paving, grading, and electrical project and issue final payment to Dunick Brothers in the amount of $69,828.13.
Second? Second? We have a motion and a second to accept the 2004 airport paving, grading, and electrical project, issue final payment to Dunick Brothers in the amount of $69,828.13. Any comment about that? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
The second resolution, Mr. Mayor, is to amend the budget according to this modification. So I would introduce that resolution.
Second? We have a motion and a second to amend the budget accordingly for the $30,000. Comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. I have a question. Without going into the details of why they had to rework the 1999 plan, Mick or Mel, does it make sense to you guys why they had to do that? Was there something significant-
Well, it does, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you notice, the work began on that airport layout plan almost 10 years ago.
Right.
A lot has changed here locally with regard to our airport project, and we were able to substantiate the changes that have taken place with regard to the FAA requirements and therefore recommended approval of the contract.
Thank you. Back to Councilmember Reese.
The city has received a request for a liquor license for sale of intoxicating liquors at the Civic Center Arena by a non-Minnesota-based corporation. The current ordinance states that the licensee must be organized under the laws of the state or registered to do business under the laws of the state in this area of national groups leasing the Civic Center. Staff is recommending, amending the ordinance to remove the state Minnesotan limitations. So, Mr. Mayor, I would move to introduce an ordinance for hearing-
Tom Angus was with us that evening, and there's some additional costs that were due to changes in the standards of the airport layout plan. There were significant changes, and the format resulted in a major, unanticipated rework of the 1999 airport layout plan. And HNTB is proposing a lump sum amendment of thirty thousand dollars to complete the additional work. And the additional costs are grant-eligible, with ninety-five percent federal funding and five percent local. So I have two resolutions, Mr. Mayor. One, to approve the amendment to the professional services agreement in the lump sum of thirty thousand dollars, and authorize the mayor, city administrator, to sign on behalf of the city.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for a resolution that approves an amendment to the professional services agreement with HNTB in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, and has to do some rework of the airport layout plan. Other comments about this?
Roll call.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The second resolution, Mr. Mayor, is to amend the budget according to this modification. So I would introduce that resolution.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to amend the budget accordingly for the thirty thousand dollars. Comment?
Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. I have a question. Without going into the details of why they had to rework the 1999 plan, Mick or Mel, does it make sense to you guys why they had to do that? Was there something significant?
Well, it does, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you notice, the work began on that airport layout plan almost ten years ago.
Right.
A lot has changed here locally with regard to our airport project, and, and we were able to substantiate the changes that have taken place with regard to the FAA requirements, and therefore recommended approval of the contract.
Thank you. Back to Councilmember Reese.
The city has received a request for a liquor license for sale of intoxicating liquors at the Civic Center Arena by a non-Minnesota-based corporation. The current ordinance states that the licensee must be organized under the laws of the state or registered to do business under the laws of the state in this area of national groups leasing the Civic Center. Staff is recommending, amending the ordinance to remove the state of Minnesota limitations. So, Mr. Mayor, I would move to introduce the, an ordinance for hearing on February nineteenth, two thousand and seven, to do so.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to have a public hearing on February nineteenth that introduce an ordinance to amend alcohol sales at the Civic Center. Further comment about this? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Next item was in regards to two final right-of-way plats used as legal description of parcels to be acquired for the proposed conveyance corridors, and they have been prepared. These plats are used by the city appraiser and legal counsel for the property acquisition. Donna Union Associates recommends acceptance of the plats and authorization for the mayor to sign the plats prior to filing. I would introduce a resolution of accepting the right-of-way plats as presented and authorize the mayor to sign for the city.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to accept the right-of-way plats as presented and authorize signature. Further comment about this?
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Last item was an update from our staff in regards to the state's proposed eight-hundred megahertz communication system. We received an explanation of the proposed system, including information from St. Cloud officials who have participated in a pilot program and financial implications to the city and county as we near the deadline dates for mandated broad and narrow band changes and decisions regarding moving forward with the purchase and installation of the eight-hundred megahertz in the city and county. But that was for information only. If there's questions, we'll entertain them. Otherwise, I move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Any comments? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to see if I'm clear on item number one here, the bottom of the page that says, "Other items of revision include further evaluation of Tenth Street and Candyohi Avenue Southwest stormwater options." What does that mean? Just further evaluation? I mean, any solutions or recommendations, or just?
Looking for, for me?
Whoever. What does it mean, further evaluation? We've been evaluating it, I'm assuming, for a few months here. Further evaluation?
Mick, do you want to comment?
On stormwater options? What does it really mean?
It was the council's motion.
Yeah, I didn't understand what that means, though. I mean, the, the, further options, is it, is it an option to purchase?
But that's why I asked if you were looking for me, because it actually came from the table here. I think to put staff on the, in the position of explaining it is difficult, because it wasn't their motion, it was ours.
Yeah, I came.
My understanding of it is, is that we look at the intersection. We've already said we aren't going to purchase property, but what can we do in that area to alleviate flooding into the houses? What other options? Is there any other options?
Okay.
That was my understanding.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, I'm just going to offer this clarifying motion, and we can say yes or no to it, but so that it's clear what it is that we're talking about. I move to direct staff to evaluate the area of Tenth Street and Candyohi Avenue Southwest for stormwater project alternatives, including potential options which may require acquisition of properties, or acquisition of property or properties in that study area, and present their findings to the council by June two thousand and eight.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and, did you write all that out, Steve?
I can give it to him.
All right, so the clerk has it.
It's, it's written here and there.
All right, discussion. Councilmember Reese?
What is, Councilmember Gardner, what's the difference between that and what staff has already done when we considered the six properties and looked at the cost of acquiring the properties and what effect that would have on the area?
Certainly that that has been evaluated, but no specific projects have been evaluated. We haven't looked at this and said, what is the possibility of what could happen here? We really haven't given that a thorough look. Now, one of the things that, that I want to see happen here is, and, and this doesn't require us to say yes or no to purchasing the property. That's, that's, that's the furthest thing from what I want right now. I know we've said in the past that we're not interested in that, but we haven't been presented with something that may work. I want to find out if there's anything there that may work. If there's nothing that works there, I'm perfectly willing to let this drop. But I want us to find out what it is that may or may not work. That's all. Those folks in that entire neighborhood deserve that consideration.
Well, I, I, I don't know. I, I thought that staff had come with findings as far as acquiring properties, values based on the appraiser, or the assessor's office, and costs of building something there, and the effect of it. And I thought that we had said, no, we didn't think that that was going to be significant enough for the cost. There wasn't going to be enough there to justify the cost.
In the case of the one property, that may be correct. Now, if we're going to take that kind of, of tack on this?
No, I think that was on six properties, if I'm not mistaken.
But if we're going to take that kind of tack, then, 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 you know, a, a number of the items that I presented at our work session two weeks ago, because they don't have a big enough effect, just simply aren't worth pursuing at that point in time. And I don't think that's what I was hearing when I was talking to the professionals that were presenting at Hawk Creek and elsewhere. They're talking about accumulative effect of all these different types of things that we can do, and I want that area evaluated for that, especially considering that we don't have the stormwater storage that we're, that was planned for this year, going in at Wilmer Avenue between Eighth and Eleventh Street. And I have serious concerns as to whether or not the school board is going to allow the city to pursue the Garfield site. I, I don't get any sense from those quarters whatsoever that there's any great clamor to let us do that over in that area. So we need to at least look at this. Let's make sure that we can look these folks in the eye and tell them we've given this our best consideration.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, if we want to look them in the eye and give them our best consideration, then let's tell them we'll trade lots, we'll find them a lot, because Mr. Jorgensen's house isn't worth anything the way it sits there now. We're better off trading a lot for them. And there's been discussion, hasn't there? With you and Mr. Jorgensen, Mr. Christensen?
Been in contact with them about that possibility.
Okay. Mr. Jorgensen, are you willing to trade lots, or?
I'll look at any options. The lot that was proposed, that a mortgage left against it, I guess, I didn't see that in our question, because the house wouldn't quite fit out anyway, so, I do appreciate the offer.
Okay. But I'm, I'm talking about a lot that's free and clear of assessments and everything, so you can move the lot, or you can the house onto that lot.
Happy to investigate some, I agree with the words right now. I mean, April's coming, and spring months are coming, and the whole area down there's going to be looking at a revisit of.
And I would, I would say if any other neighbors are willing to trade a lot and move the house off at their expense, that's the best way to go, because there's no way we're going to spend a million, two, to buy six properties.
Rich, Rick, where, where would we get these lots that would be traded?
We would buy them.
Buy an empty lot in the city, you mean?
I mean, we've got, how many? Ryan, you know how many lots we have in town?
A little over two hundred.
So, I mean, there should be.
Got some that are in developments that are over twenty years old, empty.
And how much are these lots valued at? A range, a range of prices?
Anywhere from, I think in Williams Park, where you can probably pick them up for twenty-some thousand dollars and up to forty-some thousand dollars elsewhere, but.
Twenty to forty-five with assessments.
For an empty lot.
With assessments and everything, and we've got our street lights and.
Let me ask our city attorney, Rich. If the city were to go down that direction of buying empty lots to relocate houses, what, what are we setting up for the city in terms of a lot of people wanting to do that? I mean, this isn't the only intersection that gets flooded.
I think you go back to the letter I wrote, November twenty-first. If you follow that procedure, I think you've got a plan in place, and you've got a defensible position.
But could it be limited to a certain number of lots, or does it open up a precedent that anybody can apply for this stuff?
Well, anybody can ask you to do a project at any time for any reason, and if you haven't got the money to do it, you decline it. Or if it isn't a good project for the city, just because you agree to do one project doesn't obligate you to do another project in the future if there isn't a basis to do it.
All right, council, any other comments here? All right, Kevin, can you give us a summary of that motion somehow?
Motion by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by Councilmember Christian, to direct staff to evaluate the area of Tenth Street Southwest and Candyohi Avenue Southwest for stormwater alternatives with options which may include acquisition of property or properties in that study area.
All right.
And to, and to report back to the council by June two thousand and eight.
All right, that's the motion. Mick, you want to comment?
Just to say, Mr. Mayor, that it is much more clear, and we can report back before June.
You could work with there or not. All right, any other comments from council members? Councilmember Anderson?
Mick, having said that, you're, you're saying that what's in the improvement project that we've already passed is clear enough? We don't need another motion? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, you, we don't, this a motion?
This is a separate standalone motion from what we already approved.
But you're trying to clarify?
I'm trying to clarify the intent of the motion that we passed in January.
Okay. Anyone else?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't like the word acquisition in there, because when you're acquiring it.
May include. It doesn't obligate us to anything.
I would rather see a, a trade or a swap.
You want to make that a friendly amendment?
Sure, because I don't, I don't want the city to be stuck with a bunch of houses.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for an amendment that uses the words swap or?
Trade or swap.
Or trade regarding land.
Land.
Regarding land, not houses. All right, any other comment about the amendment? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the acquisition, you replaced acquisition with this trading or swapping, is that?
Right.
All right, any other comment about the amendment? Roll call then, Kevin, on the amendment to the motion?
You'd like that? Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
No.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
No.
Reese?
No.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Five ayes, three nays.
The amendment passes. Now we're back to the original motion, which our city clerk had just read off, including this language, which references trading or swapping land, but not buildings. Do you, does anybody have, do you want the motion read again, or are you clear on what you're voting on?
Read it.
Okay, read it again, Kevin, with the new language.
To direct staff to evaluate the area of Tenth Street Southwest and Candyohi Avenue Southwest for stormwater alternatives with options which may include trading or swapping land for property or properties in that study area, and to report back to the council by June two thousand and eight.
Okay, are you clear on that now? Any comments about that?
How was that different?
Go ahead, Sin.
How was that different?
You just amended that motion.
The amendment.
When you voted yes, no.
Okay, got it.
Mick, can you work with that? That language?
Yes, sir.
All right. There's no other comments? Roll call on that resolution.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
No.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That resolution passes. All right. I had one question before we file these minutes. What is the county project that's being delayed until two thousand and nine from First Street to Eighteenth Street and Wilmer Avenue?
That's the reconstruction of Wilmer Avenue.
The, that, for eighteen blocks? Is that because of anything, is that because of the sewer line? That's not going down Wilmer Avenue at all.
No, it's an extension of the reconstruction of Wilmer Avenue. They did it from First Street.
That's right, on the other side of First Street. Okay, now they're completing it to the west.
Then there would be the realignment at the railroad crossing.
So that'll all happen in oh nine.
Councilmember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sat in for Councilmember Christensen at this Public Works meeting, and I brought up the fact that I had been told by a couple of pilots that because of the increase in fuel costs, that many people are not flying quite as much, some are selling their aircraft. And the point is that, are we not reimbursed by the federal government based upon takeoffs and landings at the airport? Is that going to be significant? And I'd like for them to report back if there are some significant changes that occur out there. Possibility that avgas could go to like six bucks a gallon.
Yeah.
And pleasure flying is not going to be.
I've been hearing that. Staff, do you have any comments on that?
I think our, we responded, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Dockin's concerns by indicating that it was difficult to, to tell exactly during this time of year because of the really, really cold weather, that we weren't seeing as many flights in and out. I think Ms. Galvin indicated that she didn't expect to see a big drop in jet fuel because of the corporate users of the airport. But we will obviously monitor the situation, and, and if we start to see some significant changes, we'll, we'll be sure that the council's made aware of that.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else, though? If not, those in favor of filing these minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next is the consideration of the City of Wilmer's two thousand and eight pay equity report. Mick, do you want to come in on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in your packet is an, an executive summary that briefly describes what we're talking about here. The state of Minnesota, whether it's good news or bad news, is the only state in the nation that has a pay equity law that requires municipalities and other governmental units to submit every three years a pay equity plan, and generally with that, or not a plan, but a report. What that report is intended to do is show that the compensation, compensation levels between the male and female classes is, that there's not a large separation. And there are a number of, of different tests that we have to, to run to make sure that that is, that we are in compliance with, with state law. the compliance report, which summarizes the results of the findings of the four different tests. We are required by law as well, Mr. Mayor, that the council approve the report and authorize us to submit it to the Department of Employee Relations.
Mick, I don't think we have a copy of that summary report.
I don't, I don't have it in the packet, no.
Right here, it's in the Friday memo.
Well, that's what I've got.
We didn't get it in there. I put it in the Friday memo.
There it is.
There it is. Yeah, it's in the Friday memo.
We're recommending approval, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council?
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2008 pay equity report. Further comment?
Mr. Mayor, I know that cover sheet was sent out under, under different mailing in the council packet. Was there a copy, is this made available to the public here for the meeting tonight with the council packet?
I don't know if it's in there or not. We're required to provide copies of the report to all of the representatives of the various labor groups that are involved with the city, the utilities, and the hospital. We're required to post the, that one-page notice that you see in your packet there, and also provide a copy to the library. And copies are available at the city offices.
You have a concern, Brooks?
Well, I'm just concerned that, you know, we got public here at the meeting that, you know, they have a copy of the agenda, but then they never get any copies of the supporting documents that are handed out to the council.
Well, most of this information is included in the public information book. If this wasn't in your council packet, then it won't be in there either. You know, I don't want to sound, if this page that we're talking about was in your packet or in the public's packet, nobody would understand it anyway. So, I would suggest that if you, if people have questions or concerns or issues with the report, they should stop down to the city offices and review the full report.
Any other comments about this? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, given that lack of understanding, that I would certainly have looking at a single page without knowing what the documentation is behind it. I'd like to know a little more about this, and I guess I'd like to see this brought before the Labor Committee.
This summary compliance report?
I'd like to understand it a little better. I'm sure it's fine.
I'd be glad to do that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll put it on the Labor Committee agenda for the next Labor Committee.
Thank you.
We've already got a motion, I believe. We've already got a motion, I believe.
We do, yeah.
I can, I made the motion. I can remove the motion if it's going to Labor.
So, is the issue here not to approve it tonight? You send it to Labor?
Correct.
Is there a deadline?
Why would you want to do that? The report that you see there shows that the city's in compliance. I'll make the presentation to the Labor Relations Committee, but what it is, what I will be providing to the Labor Relations Committee are the compensation levels of the various male and female classes by position classification. There's, it's not going to change anything, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
And I understand that, but I'd like to understand it just a little better before we actually say yea or nay to the document. Like you said, I'm sure it's just fine. If it's time-sensitive, we can certainly...
Is it time-sensitive, Mick?
Yeah, I would, I would ask the council to approve it. What you're approving is sending it into the Department of Employee Relations.
And then explain everything to the Labor Committee on what it is. All right. We have a motion to approve this. It's been seconded. Any other comment about that motion? Rick?
How many years have we done this?
Forever.
Every three.
Every three years. Back in the, I believe that it started back...
I think it was the late 80s.
Yeah. Any other comments? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the understanding is there'll be a report to the Labor Committee to explain it further.
Thank you.
Next, consideration of a premise permit, Community Charities of Minnesota Candy Entertainment Center. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you a request to approve a two-year permit to run pull tabs. It's called a premise permit. It's before the gambling control board. The Community Charities of Minnesota headquartered at Mankato has been running that for quite a few years at the Candy Ohio, or the Candy Entertainment Center. And one more time, they're requesting this renewal of the premise permit, and it requires a resolution by the governing board.
Council? Move to approve.
Target.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving this application. Further comment? Councilmember DeBleek?
I guess just a question of, probably seen it in the past, but what is, who is the Community Charities of Minnesota? What do they do? What is their focus? What is their effort?
I guess we can review some of their contributions, but I don't have the, they have specific contributions. I'm trying to think which one that I know Mr. Patterson brings to me, and I think that is Wilmer Fest for one of them. But I can't remember all of their contributions.
Is this the one from the Candy Entertainment Center itself?
Right, for the pull tab operation there.
Right, okay. They donate monies in Minnesota. They do some for hunting groups. They do some for Wilmer Fest. What else is the KEC? I think some of the tournaments, things like that. They make contributions to a number of organizations that the owners of the KEC approve. Anything else?
I thought at one time that we, maybe this goes back a few years, that at one time we were going to see reports of where these contributions are made by these charities.
We'll double-check to make sure theirs are being included, but yes, that's exactly what goes to the Finance Committee.
We see them.
Can you review that, the Finance Committee?
We get all the local ones, yes. And in fact, we were wondering at our last session if that really made sense that we continued to get that. I mean, we review them.
Yeah. Councilmember Fagerly, you have a comment?
Well, I had a concern also, like Councilman DeBleek, but is there a percentage that they have money that has to stay in the community where they collect it at then, with this charity, or?
Not sure about that answer. We could look up that rule.
Because I know, you know, with the Chamber, starting their promotion, keep the money local.
Cool.
And I know the other clubs, VFW Legion, their raffle, or pull tab business is down. You could think maybe a local one would want to go to the KEC. I thought they used to have the Blue Line out there. Was that at Pool and Pub? But it'd be interesting...
That was Edinburgh's for one. Trying to think where they were at. And they're still at someplace right now.
The Elks? They had the Elk many times.
In the Elks, I think so.
One of them.
If you could check and see if there's a percentage that has to stay in our community.
Okay.
Knowing the Patterson family, I'm sure they make a contribution to the Boy Scouts. All their kids are involved heavily in the scouting program. But I'm sure Jeff or, who's the manager?
Keith.
Keith, those fellows would produce whatever documentation you ask for.
Well, I'll double-check our records just to see if we have them. We have to have them here at renewal time as one of our enforcement procedures. If somebody's missing one, we'll get it before we grant them the resolution. So...
All right, the motion's on the table. Do you want to vote on it? Roll call.
Councilmember Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. We're now down to the announcement of council committee meeting dates. Finance?
Finance will meet Monday, the 11th, at 4:45.
February 11th, 4:45, Finance. Public Works, Public Safety.
Tuesday, the 12th, at 4:45. And please make note, it will be at the fire station meeting room, training room.
Are you expecting a larger group there?
No, there's some stormwater hearing by the EPA, is that what it is? That's at 3:30. So, that's why it's being held there.
Right after that, I think, at 4:45.
Ours will be after the hearing.
Okay. Community Development?
Community Development will meet Thursday, February 7th, 4:45.
February 7th, Community Development, 4:45. Labor?
Mr. Mayor, Labor Committee will meet on Wednesday, the 27th, at 4:45 at City Hall.
4:45, February 27th for Labor. Chief, any cops meetings that we should be aware of?
I don't have the dates with me, but we talked about having a citywide one in March. I don't have that date.
All right. I just have one announcement, and that has to do with the celebration of cultures on Saturday, February 23rd. This is held at the Kennedy School, which some people refer to as the Old Hay School, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's Kennedy. This is Saturday, February 23rd. The sign says, "Company experience over 30 different cultural groups in our area through demonstrations, crafts, foods, and entertainment." Admission is free. It goes from 11 o'clock to 5:00 PM on that Saturday. They hold this every two years. I know last year they had over 4,000 people there. Schools bring in buses from outside of Wilmer to come to this. It's quite an interesting day, and I invite the public to attend that. Any other announcements at the council? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder of the council work session as well, on the 13th at 5:00 PM.
February 13th, 5:00 PM, the council work session, and that's on the charter, the idea of the Charter Commission.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow night is caucus night, and I want to encourage everybody to go out and caucus with whoever they want to caucus with.
Jim, do you want to tell, say where the two major parties are caucusing?
I can only tell you where the one party, that would be the Republican Party, they are caucusing at the Junior High in Wilmer.
Bethel is the other.
Yeah. Republican Party's at the Junior High School.
And other locations throughout the county, but in the city of Wilmer.
The city.
It's at the Junior High School in the cafeteria.
And the Democratic Party is caucusing at Bethel Lutheran Church. And both of them start, I think they gather at 6:30, and they actually begin the process at 7:00. We really encourage the public to participate however they want to do that. Anything else before the council tonight? If not, a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Second. We have a motion. It's been seconded. We are adjourned.